All right, it's not that I disagree that Chester Gap.
Yeah, thank you.
But no, I was. To the Water and Sewer Authority, right now it furnishes sewer for Sperryville, but AMS. People in Scrabble or Chester.
We all agree about the.
Safety Committee. Those are going to be very heavily interwoven to the budget, which now is right on the doorstep. But if the board has the information to believe that this is the method, it would be helpful for me for that to be made clear right now.
I mean, I feel like I should carry this ball forward from the Public Safety Committee that take action on these recommendations, knowing that we are in a sensitive time where we are bringing on new staff and they will be integral to the process. I still think we need to stress the importance of getting this in motion as soon as possible. I mean, this all started with a conversation with the chiefs. I don't mean to put you on the spot, Gary, but I think you were on vacation. So it's a time marker for me in September.
Yeah.
Right? In September, the chiefs told us that they needed this, that they needed help. And, you know, now here we are in January.
And going back before that, you had the association sending the letter in the board including the budget.
Correct, about part-time. So, you know, this has been, this has been languishing. I think it's got good momentum now with this meeting from the association and the Public Safety Committee, and I think we need to just keep the focus and emphasis on this. You know, we are, we are, you know, thank God, very fortunate to live in Rappahannock County and to sort of seem to be having a moderate time with COVID. But it is, our volunteers are very vulnerable, and I have, I have concerns that we, we need to keep this moving forward. And that might be a very sort of vague motion, but until we have staff onboard to, to get more traction, that, that may be the, just that we need. We need to keep the emphasis on implementing this approach and.
What I heard is you want staff to develop the process and schedule with the association.
That is correct. That's my motion.
Until we have a clear logistic, I need a flow chart on how this is going to work before I'm going to be able to jump and say, yes, this is great.
Flow chart on how the model works?
Yep. Between the volunteer and the paid and dispatch, I mean, they've all got to be.
Well, the dispatch is, is dispatching from a manual agreed to by the association. So, you know, that's the simplest part of all of this.
It'll have to be edited, though.
Of course. That's, that's easy.
Yep.
The, and I'm sure the sheriff will carry out what is agreed to by the association and dispatch, as long as it's functionally capable, and I have no reason to believe it wouldn't be. My biggest concern is that we will have county employees and volunteer members, and there'll be some confusion, well, you know, do I have to listen to you? Do you listen to me? That's my concern. So that's the process that needs to be worked out very carefully, and it needs to be done in a way that everybody understands is collaborative. And we need to hire part-time or full-time providers for the county who recognize the model that we have and fit with that model, because we can't, you know, bring in people who don't recognize the value of volunteer systems.
So, Ms. Smith, are you saying we just need to give staff the tentative go-ahead to put more of the logistics together and, and work with the association and the chiefs?
I hate to ask this question, but could you repeat the motion, Gary?
I believe the motion is to, for the board to identify that you agree with the recommendation of the association and the Public Safety Committee that the chase vehicle is the appropriate first step for us in the community for EMS, and that staff now needs to work with the association to develop, and these are words in the agreement, the process and the schedule to implement.
And the expense. I assume you need to see.
Well, that is always at your, you will be making those decisions if you go to the budget. But yeah, of course.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I will, I'll gladly second, and I appreciate everyone who's contributed to this. Ms. Donahue, Ms. Smith, Mr. Frazier, Mr. Williams, Mr. Glenny have all done a lot of work on this, so thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Let's see. If we can get through fire levy guidelines update. This is something that Mr. Comar did last year. He presented, I think he sent a letter and email with the attached documents and the changes. The fire levy board went through it very carefully, and I think the changes, Mr. Curry, correct me if I'm wrong, are in italics.
No, the changes are not identified in any special font, and the documents that are attached, the attached documents are the new final version.
Okay, all right. The only change that I think.
There may be some in italics, pardon me.
Yeah.
But that's just emphasis.
When I looked at it, but the only change that I think is something that we definitely have to have a conversation about is the capital expense was set at $7,500 for I don't know how many years. But the fire levy board discussed this, and with the increase in expense of just about everything in our lives these days, felt that we should bump that up to $10,000, which would be the cap between an operational expense and a capital expense for the stations when they submit their invoices for audit.
And the big picture, you budget annually for the fire companies based on their operational expenses, and you don't want that operational expense to be influenced by one-time purchases of capital items, you know, fluctuating up and down, up and down. The capital has been understood to be the responsibility of the companies through their fundraising or EMS cost recovery or any other method of funding that they have. That operational expense, which should be a more, more routine burn, is what the board has agreed to cover. And so in this case, if there are one-time purchases with a long life of $10,000 or more, those are capital. That's not something that is expected to happen every year, and they should, those are the responsibility of the companies.
We are tentatively scheduled to meet February 9th. I chose that date because we have to give the chiefs time to review all of the submissions, and then they forward those onto the fire levy board for our audit.
All of these changes would be for January 1 forward for the next half a year. And the idea is that all the companies, we use the same format, same rules. Everybody knows exactly what they need to do in order to clearly show their operational expenses to the county so that the county can budget in the next year enough to carry those companies.
While we're there, would this be the proper time to discuss when a company makes a, a new purchase? It's one thing to cycle an ambulance out and cycle a new one in, and it's an ongoing operation, but the purchase of a large piece of equipment that they didn't have previously, the county has no little or no involvement in the, in the process, but then it shows up on operational expenses a year later. So I just wonder at what point in time do we ever address that?
Good point.
Actually, I do completely agree with you, hoping that the new full-time position, working with the association and the chiefs, will look at that scenario, because we have one in my mind with Tanker Four and the needs for the radio expense.
Exactly.
We don't have anything in place that I'm aware of that says if you buy a vehicle, you're responsible for everything else, because we do maintenance and everything is covered by the fire levy board. But I do believe at some point, all of the companies need to work with hopefully this full-time position and look at the county as a whole and say, what kind of equipment do we need? Or we have everything we need, don't anybody buy anything? Because we get into the scenario where we've got, I think, a $10,000 bill, and I don't think you want to have that just an open, can happen anytime.
Yeah. As far as the, we'll get to the radios in a minute, but as far as they go, the company could technically buy it. It's, you know, would be deemed an operational expense under the old rules, new rules.
Yep.
But I don't want them to buy it, because all the other radios are county assets covered by the county warranty and, and maintenance, and so I want us to own those radios.
Same difference.
But they could just through operational expense buy radios.
True. So I don't know if that answered your question, but I hope it's something that we look into.
I just thought I'd throw that out there, because it's not just, I'm not trying to pick on Flint Hill for, for, you know, buying a new piece of equipment that we really had no involvement in, but we saw where Castleton and Chester Gap did the same thing with those army vehicles they call SERV, and we had to outfit them with some equipment probably, but I know that we started paying operational expense on them.
And so that would be something that would be included in the fire and rescue services agreement. It is not now, and there's broad discretion given to the companies to deliver the services they think are necessary in the ways that they think are necessary. And the more the board, what I've said at past fire levy board meetings, the more the board is expected and the citizens are expected to pay for these things, the more the companies should, should understand that the board is going to want to be involved in those decisions.
Exactly.
And so, and that is part of the reason why the companies have basically said, we don't need you involved in capital payment right now, because we won't make those decisions ourselves. But you do say, there is a follow-on tail of that operational expense. All of it is much more affordable than a 100% paid fire and rescue operation.
Debbie, your colleague from the fire levy board.
Yes, mister.
A little clarification, though. Fire levy, the service agreement does require a duty plan, which isn't just new personnel, it also does capital expenditures, all right? And if you know that, what it said was the capital expenditures of the apparatus is fine, all right? But then we bought a tanker anyway. So that's the mechanism that you have entered in, is to seek what's coming. You don't have direct control over that.
Right.
And there is something in the guidance that if they buy used equipment, you don't pay for operational costs or repairs the first, the third year, right? So they don't buy a junk.
I think all, my guess is all of that will be reviewed by the new hire, and hopefully we can all work together on that.
It's a delicate balance, balance of keeping the independent companies fiercely independent and, and action-oriented and bringing in county government control, and so there's, it's a delicate balance.
But it's difficult for them to be fiercely independent while the taxpayer's footing the bill, so like I say, there's got to be some give and take.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion on the fire levy guidance update, guidelines update?
Do you need any action from us on this this evening?
Yes, so the, the agreement, the services agreement basically states that the, the rules on how the companies submit their data for the budget in paragraph 42 are based on the process developed by the fire levy board and approved by the board of supervisors. And so the fire levy board has put forward this process through, identified in these three documents, and is asking the board to approve them. There really aren't very many major changes.
Yeah. The fire levy board is a pretty tight ship, and they, I think Mr. Glenny has probably a 20-page spreadsheet that shows all the purchases over time, and it's very, very detailed. Everybody on the board takes the audit very seriously, and all that we basically did was do some tweaking to, instead of you have to get three bids, you can actually, it's recommended from the fire levy board that you get those bids, because we recommend that to everyone, but we can't make an independent nonprofit do the bids.
And as you said, it's one of the substantive changes, that capital, everything else, and the rules works.
Yep.
It was last, it was last increased three years ago from 5,000 to 7,500.
Well, and I think I was at this meeting in Castleton, and I seem to recall the recommendation was unanimous, correct?
Right.
So, I mean, I would, I would make a motion that we adopt the changes presented in the agenda this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discuss, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. And then number two, Mr. Curry recommended change to board of supervisors' meeting agenda policy.
Yeah, this is a change that I've suggested to the board to, past weeks, that appeared to be appropriate based on the length of some of the discussions that have happened at the beginning of your meetings. Presentations right now are set to happen following a consent agenda and public comment. I thought it might make more sense to have presentations just after the school report, and if you have people from industry or groups that are coming to make those presentations, they can get them done and get out of here before you dig into the meat of your agenda. Just a recommendation, and if this is something that the board would like to do, you could identify that through a vote, and your policy will be changed.
Chairman, my, my only concern reviewing this recommendation is that in regards to tonight's agenda, this would not have worked, because we had to adopt the, we had to vote as part of the consent agenda for the presentations that were then presented later in the agenda. So I'm not sure how we could.
Yes.
Do presentations after the school board and then adopt what we've just presented. So.
Certain types of presentations.
I don't know if there'd be a way to split that into presentations, as in presentations that don't require action versus.
Information.
Recognizations or something like that, that we were then put in after the, the consent agenda, which we could certainly split off.
Presentations like today, recognizing people for their service, could we just, could we just, as a matter of business, not include such resolution adoption as part of the consent agenda and just have that as a preceding item, or?
I notice on the, on the title block, it says Rules Committee, so you think maybe we could just send it to the Rules Committee to work out some of those wrinkles?
That would be a fine idea.
Bring it back next month with the wrinkles removed?
Yeah. You could just have those presentations at the night presentation section rather than the day you adopted in, in your old business, new business, or consent agenda during the day, and then you hand it to a person at night, then you wouldn't have to do the, we have to recess and sign this document process.
Dolce, you're talking about present, like Mr. Ockery waited for a couple of hours before he.
Yep.
His little presentation, and that was a necessary wait. And then, I mean, remember that somebody had something, some kind of presentation when we had the Second Amendment sanctuary, and that person sat through.
Nighttime is.
Hours and hours.
Yeah, nighttime's different, and I didn't make a change there, because the advertised time of public hearings is seven o'clock.
Yeah.
You could decide to have the advertised time of public hearings at 7:30, and then have a few matters on the agenda beforehand, and then when the hour came to 7:30, you would switch over and handle your public hearings. A lot of boards do it that way.
It does sound like it would make sense for the Rules Committee to take a look at all of that, come back.
That's a good idea, yeah. It is all good comments.
Yes. Anything else on that? Okay. Preliminary budget discussion?
I was asked by a board member to have this on the agenda. The schedule that I prepared for you included an item, this would be an appropriate time to provide preliminary input to me. For example, if the board wanted to, made a structure of budget around a 10-cent real estate tax rate reduction, I would need to really start figuring out how to do that. And I say those numbers, because I find it very unlikely that you would do that. But.
Thank you for making it a reduction, Mr. Curry.
Yes. So, you know, are there certain things that you want me to start from a very base level incorporating into the budget?
I would only say that in the context of our chase levy discussion, just making sure that whatever, I believe you, you had some money set aside for that, or some form of paid EMS in the last budget cycle, so just making sure that that's fine-tuned and thought through is kind of an obvious point for me.
Of course.
And then we're waiting on, I think we're still waiting on the follow-up report from, I get all these names confused. Is it Wiley Wilson?
Wiley Wilson, we have a scope and fee document that is available for review by the building committee, based on the last meeting, the joint, the joint meeting we had and when Mr. Vaughn was here.
Right.
That is ready for review.
Okay.
Ingratelli is the HR group that did the classification and compensation study. And then also, while I'm talking, there's a lot of discussion among board members about health insurance last year.
Right.
About what, what, which of the different, I don't know what the right word is, policy offerings should be provided to staff, paid entirely by the county, partially by the county, which should be our basis? Should we align with the schools? Should we align with our communities? Should we just keep doing what we're doing? Should we change the method through which we switch, we share the cost? And so that may be something the board wants to dig into, and I know there was a thought that that could happen over the summer, but I believe the pandemic.
Well, those are, those are three big, big items. The second, just to follow up on the Wiley Wilson point, I think it's, whatever the term of art is, envelope preservation protection. I mean, what are we going to do to make sure these buildings are as protected as they can be? And depending on the timeline, I'm guessing it should be contemplated, money should be set aside for that sort of initial step purpose in this upcoming fiscal year budget.
Yeah, I don't want to get too far into budgeting, but those sort of things are one-time use of funds. Those are easy to budget for any time of the year.
Okay.
It's the recurring need of funds that are really critical for you to really dig into. And that's not to say we don't want to look at the capital budget at the same time, particularly if there is a debt service component that will be a recurring cost. But you have budget right now, and the capital budget.
Yeah.
Frozen to tackle some building issues.
Okay.
We just need to decide when to unfreeze and which project should we tackle.
I mean, constituents say, what are your big-ticket items? Okay, I mean, just to whittle it down to that, and immediately say, paid EMS, buildings. So, at a high level, that's what I care about as we start this budget discussion.
I've had a concern, and I'm not sure how this will time out, but I know that we've were, we've approved the appraisals of the county property.
Reassessment?
That, yeah, the estimates, which I would, I would think the way that that kind of feeds into the tax process is that that would then influence the amount of the tax bills eventually? And how does that align?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
If, if the assessed value increases more than enough to increase the tax revenue, then you have to advertise an equalized tax rate that would bring in the same amount of tax revenue.
Okay.
So really, the process is all about fairly sharing the burden among property owners based on the value of their property. And then we may have to, we may have a tax rate that's 70 cents, but it brings in the same revenue as the 73 we have now between the two.
Right. But is that more likely to impact anything next year by the time everything finishes that?
Right, it will, it will have little, I believe, effect on this.
Okay, very good. I just wanted to make sure we weren't heading into something with that this year.
All right. Any other budget discussion? Do you need anything from us out of this?
No, and I would just encourage each of you to send me an emails that are particular items you want me to focus or think about. Obviously, I'm not taking direction from a person, but I think it's valuable on the overall processes I'm developing, particularly if I get five emails all saying the exact same thing.
Yeah. Thanks a lot.
All right. And authorized use of fire service fund contingency to purchase radios for Tanker Four.
So I mentioned this earlier, that Flint Hill wanted to contact Harris to buy radios, and I told them no. And I would like us to be buying these radios just as we have in the past. We purchased the, all the mobile radios and all the fire apparatus that are installed today, and they're all under warranty with Harris through the county. And we control the quality of the radio and the warranty of the radio and all of that, and I believe that is the best way to do this, and I base that on what I did in my past community as well. And I'm working right now, finally, on a draft MOU with our partners in Falkir and Culpeper, and Falkir is finally kind of kicking this off, so that we have a common understanding of how the three of us are going to operate this regional system, and to give us all assurance that each of us is going to be doing things in a way that furthers the system and not one of us. One of those things is making sure that equipment that's used is OEM equipment. So it's my recommendation that the board use some of the money that was appropriated to the fire service fund in the contingency line to purchase these, this mobile radio and portable radios charger for Tanker Four. Without getting into the discussion of why we have Tanker Four.
I'll make that motion, which is to order the purchase of new ra, new radios from Harris based on regional master contract for new Tanker Four and authorize the use of fire service fund contingency budget for the same.
And I would just ask for a little bit of leeway while I work within to get these quotes right, but those numbers should be pretty, pretty close.
I'll second. Any discussion, any further discussion?
Madam Chairman, I noticed that there are some people here from Company Four. Did they have anything to add?
Ms. Huff is the newly elected president of Company Four, I think I understand?
Mr. Forback is vice president.
Oh, yes.
Congratulations.
I think these days, sat here so long, we had to make him say something.
I was going to say something, it's in the lines, I agree wrong on something, when he talked about, you know, how to be at a point where, you know, if everybody goes out and buys equipment every month, you have to, you have to spend $10,000.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's where you guys make the sign, that you are going to control certain things and you have to push them down.
Yeah, it's eye-opening for me, because I know we had this discussion about the Tanker, and, I mean, as a newbie, you don't anticipate what comes after acquiring the piece of equipment. So at least it, it, it gives me more caution than.
It's probably a small amount about fitting a truck, you know, but.
Yeah, right.
$8,000 for the hose.
What's that?
$8,000 for the hose.
Yeah, right.
Plus other equipment that you want.
Right, right.
It's a big investment all the way around.
Yeah.
If you don't buy a piece of equipment, you know, again, that's where the department needs to sit down when they decide they want a piece of equipment, and they need to be able to say, this is what it's going to cost within a couple of dollars.
Yeah.
And not be 10, 20, 30, $5,000 off on their projections.
Yeah. Yeah, appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you for all you're doing. I think we say information reports and correspondence is all online, and we can see that there.
If I would allow me just to make one comment relative to the treasurer's report, which I'll pause on while you say yes, of course. Is that okay?
Yes, absolutely.
And I do have a question on the treasurer's reports as well.
I did want you to see the sales tax charter.
Yeah.
And I did pull those numbers. So the first, first two months of quarter one is shown on this charter, actually FY20.
Yeah.
And because of the, it takes a little while for the money to eventually get to us after somebody buys it in a store, buys something in a store and taxes it. So for FY21, we have four months of actual revenue received that totals $303,394. So that's 59.75% of your reduced sales tax budget. Remember, we reduced the budget quite a bit.
Yep.
For 33% of the year. So, sales tax has been much stronger than our budget and much stronger than last year's receipts as shown on this chart. We'll see what happens through the kind of the slow winter months.
Yep.
And that's a perfect lead-in to my question, Mr. Curry. The, the cash, the cash graph, I just had a question about that, because in my mind's eye, we have $1.2 million in CARESAC money. We have far better-than-expected performance on the sales tax revenues. CARES Act money. We have far better-than-expected performance on the sales tax revenue side. And then, well, those two alone. And then the treasurer and revenue commissioner get real and personal property tax bills out early. And yet, when you look at these graphs, our spread from last year, at least to my eye, is not what you'd expect to see. I would expect our cash position to be much better. And I, I assume I'm just not thinking about something, and I thought maybe you could provide some insight.
I would never suggest you're not thinking about something. But we had $1.2 million of CARES Act money.
Okay, I think that's-
And we've spent a lot of that.
Okay.
Out the door, gone. And that's for high school auditorium. That's for Chromebooks. That's for fire and rescue-
Yep.
-companies. That's for your businesses, you know, et cetera, et cetera. All those things on that chart, that money's out the door with this check run today.
Okay.
With the exception of the portion that was assigned to public safety payroll. Now that money, cash, we still have.
Right.
But it's been accounted for.
It's like 300 and something thousand dollars, right?
Right, right. So, so the other part of that, the billing early, that helps bring that chart up earlier than it would have otherwise, or not allow it to drop as far to the low point. But we still are going to get the same amount of money at the end of the day.
I get that.
It's just we're going to get it a little bit earlier. And from a cash flow perspective, and it doesn't really show up on that chart very well, because CARES got in the middle and kind of mucked it up and actually put a lot more cash in our budget. But that low point is key in your decision-making ability and your ability to make use of the cash we have on hand.
Yeah.
And so if you, if we can confidently, which we did for three years while I've been here, track that cash curve kind of in a similar way, then you know that the cash that's left in the bank on that day, that's money that you can put to work with for a capital, a one-time use.
And this is what we, what we're nominally considering a reserve, which is something Ms. Smith and I talked about in the past.
It is a reserve in some ways, and so you wouldn't want to take all that cash and put it to work and invest it in a building or something like that. You would still get debt service if that costs that much more, because you just don't know what's going to happen on the worst day of the month for us, when the bills have to be paid. If a storm came through or something, you have to front a bunch of money-
Yep.
-before you get it back from somebody else. You want to be able to have that available and have that cushion. Most localities have policies set up on the fund balance at the end of the year. Their fund balance percent or something like that.
Yeah.
But the fund balance for one-time uses, right? And it went up, too. So that's, that's where the residual from-